Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
I call the, call the order of Bellasfall Junior High School, School District. Is there the agenda? Jason?
Yes, Molly, thank you. I have two I'd like to ask. Wondering if we can have an update on negotiations as far as either in public or executive session? You're exactly sure how that will be exact.
We will have to do that in executive session.
Well, actually, Molly, it's all been done in open, so.
Oh, okay.
Come this week.
But I think if we want to discuss how we feel about it.
Okay, we can discuss it in private, in the exec session.
Okay.
And then on the, I was looking, I was looking at the Wednesday meeting. I know it doesn't pertain to us, but under, under the SU, it has two things, it has reports from interim superintendent and executive session interim superintendent evaluation. I was wondering if that's something we could discuss or that's something that is discussed there first and then brought back to us? I didn't, I'm not planning on being at that meeting, so.
You do that's done at the SU Board because that's an SU hire.
It's actually an executive hire.
True for the SU. All right, all right, thank you for clarifying.
You certainly in the next meeting can, can ask questions.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so anyone else have adjustments?
Accessibility shortcuts.
So. So we're going to make one adjustment to the agenda. It's going to be under executive session to have an update on negotiations. Review and approve board minutes of December 13th. Anybody have any adjustments they want made to December 13th board minutes?
Yeah, I was in attendance. I'm listed as making motions in there, but not as in attendance.
Okay.
Because you were here in part, you were here in spirit.
So was he here? So the adjustment is that Priscilla Lambert was at the meeting. Any other adjustments? David Clark.
Well, Molly, I would like to know where those minutes are. I went searching for them on the WNESU website under Bellasfall Junior High School Board. Could not find them. If they had been transmitted to board members, I would like to know that mechanism for it so I can go fish them up the next time.
So I didn't look on that website, but they were sent to us on Friday with the agenda.
Thank you, Molly.
Welcome.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended for January or December 13th.
There is a motion on the table to accept the minutes as presented, but we're going to adjust them to add Priscilla as attending the meeting. David.
Yes.
Margot?
Yes.
Deb?
Hi.
Brenda?
Hi.
Get everybody that's on there. Yep, Andy, did I miss anybody on the screen?
I was not.
Yeah, you got Deb, you got Margot, Brenda, got her.
Okay. Priscilla?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Jack?
I may have accidentally deleted it because I looked, I couldn't find him, so I'm going to stay and post you all.
Perfect, all right, motion passes. Communication and public comments. Bill, would you like to speak?
Just to perhaps introduce myself, my name is Bill Morse. I live here in Rockingham. I'm a retired school teacher. I actually served on a board 20 years ago where I grew up. And curious about the high school. And before I'm here at a meeting, I'm also interested in serving on the school committee, the high school level. And that's about it. We'll see me at a couple of meetings and hopefully if things work out, then I look forward to serving.
Okay, thank you.
Deb Wright, hand up.
Deb?
I'm only speaking for our parents I've gotten, had some contact with, and that's just, just we not, it's not on the agenda. So it's simply a matter that they feel since there are quite a percentage of children that are not vaccinated in our school district. They want to, they wanted to speak out, but they're afraid to do it on their own. So wanted to say that they feel ostracized by the school system on unvaccinated children at the every treated, being treated as I was said, it was told to me like lepers. And I noticed that the most recent letter from superintendent did not address unvaccinated children whatsoever in any way, shape or form. Thank you.
Anybody on line, Andy?
No, that's it.
Okay. Policies, I don't think we have any policies, do we, Priscilla?
We have, we have policies that have been approved by the policy committee. What we have to get, I have to get the small tweaks in that we agreed to and get, and then Nicole will put them online. We kind of put it on the back burner because of dealing so much with the budget right now. But these are the ones that, that we approved and that we'll be looking to get on there. And then at the next meeting, hopefully we can approve them. A1, which is board member conflict of interest. B1, substitute teachers. B2, volunteers and work-study students, policy and procedures. B5, employee unlawful harassment. B7, tobacco prohibition. And B6, home study students. That was actually removed from our policy book previously, is not needed, but it is one of the required policies now by the state. So we'll be putting that back.
So can we, those are going to get put like emailed to us or something?
They, I think she's going to post them on the website so that people can, can look at them, but she will post them.
And then let us know.
If she needs to send them to you, then they will get sent to everybody.
All right.
Yeah, just to be clear, this is, these are, this is the SU, the SU policies.
These are the extra policies.
So we, and these have been approved by the SU.
These are the ones you approved at the meeting you were at, Jack.
So this is like an up and down kind of vote. All right, just want to make sure we're all clear on what we're doing. Thanks.
Okay, um, any questions for Priscilla on policies? See nothing? Principals report.
Okay, I know I've got a lot on the agenda tonight, so I try to keep it pretty straightforward. Winner sports, got off to a good start. Basketball and indoor track seasons continuing. Our boys right now are four and two. We've missed, I believe, two games now or will be because of other schools in a COVID situation, a COVID protocol. The girls team is one and four and been close actually in at least one of those other games and doing very well. The protocol for basketball games is followed and kept in line with our district protocols. Quick reminder, we're only allowing in home fans generally four per player unless there, you know, is a request for one or two more. Keeping a control on it. No concessions and distancing. Kids playing and wearing masks and doing a pretty good job with it. We've been focusing on that, on the mask thing as we move further into the season with these numbers increasing. We're going to maintain what we're doing and we're making a focus on our players with face covering. I, I met with the boys last Monday and Sean met with the girls in the evening. Really just to reinforce the, when you can pull your mask back up and get it up as often as you can. We realize when you're playing or you're moving, you're driving to the hoop, you're turning back, you're pivoting. You know, these things move around a lot. We've addressed it daily in school with individuals as we continue to do. What I, what I did say to the players was the DPA are also looking at giving individual schools sanctions to remove players from a game. Give them a warning first, and then if they're continually, you know, keeping the mask way down below the chin, then we can remove them. We've talked about that with our kids and we're going to help, help them through this process really to learn because as they move through the season and successful or not, although our, our boys team are playing very well at the moment, I don't want them to get to the Barry Auditorium and have a DPA rep, you know, pull one or two of our kids out because they didn't know what they were doing. So I, I addressed that with them as well, the kids, and they, they, they were very receptive. They're very respectful and very receptive. And I, I think as, as other schools go, we're doing collectively a good job with our kids. And I know it's tough for all kids to wear masks every day, all the time, you know? Nobody signed up for this, but they're doing a pretty good job on it. Vaccination status, we did before the last meeting get, the nurse was able to go on and get a lot of the figures from the state. It's gone up a little bit, not much, we're almost at 62%. And to our knowledge right now, four students have had the boosters. We are going to focus on, as we, we talked earlier today in a, in a meeting with Andy, to find a way that we can support the nurses to again gather this information as best we can. We had a delivery from the state, I believe, Andy, is that right? These purifiers?
Yes.
They delivered 51 large and the large one is right behind here, right over here. There, and, and also they delivered backup filters. That was very amazing because you know, when you normally get the first one and then you have to buy them, they delivered backup filters for them. So we have 51 of the large ones and eight of the small ones. We have them circulated all over the building, all going to help support purifying the air.
Where did they come from?
The state sent them out, and I think the number is based on the size of the area.
Did all of our schools get them?
Yeah, I was just going to clarify that when I was finishing, is that all of our schools receive. We did a, we were asked for an inventory of how many classrooms are over 900 square feet. And so you got units based on the size of the different things, so. I had a question, so the school didn't have to pay for them at all, right? So we're, we're paying for them, but just in a roundabout way.
The electric we're using.
So like that unit right there, I don't know if anybody could see it at home. It's about two feet high by about 14 inches by 14 inches. Looks like a small refrigerator that David Clark used to use in his college dorm way back when. So I would guess that that's about a $700 unit roughly. I have similar ones at home that are about half the size at plus 200. And the filter isn't cheap either, so.
They sent us a load of extra ones, which is awesome, so.
Was it all HEPA? Oh, okay.
HEPA and carbon, the carbon mix in it as well.
That's what we have even at. Who's going to, who's going to change the filters on them and vacuum them and things like that?
Maintenance. Sean, Sean was very active in getting them out and we, we just worked with V and Ryan in the evening to go through the operation of them and we don't need to change them now, but again, that will be a task on their.
So there's 50 something of those throughout the school?
51 of the big ones and eight of the smaller ones that are mainly in smaller offices.
How often do they have to be moved in?
Oh, I knew you were going to ask me that.
That's okay, I just curious.
It's so many hours that we use them, and I think on them actually is like a light that'll come on when it's.
So I was just, I was just checking back the original, what we got. So this was back in August. The agency announced the partnership with the Agency of Human Services and Department of Health, and they would offer the portable air filters, including two replacement filters for classrooms and other school spaces. And they signed this, so that was back in, when did I guess this, back in November? So then they signed it and then they were, they were pushed out. And so we had to complete a, a survey of what we wanted on it. So I think it's, you know, it's nice that we did get the two extra air filters, you know, but a lot of things with the state, you know, you get and you got to give too, that's the hard part, so. But they didn't have a cost or anything like that.
That's great.
And then whatever.
Yeah, it'll support our projects and stuff. Lastly, on my report, we've got the eighth grade transition process. We, we always begin this in January by talking to first the middle school. I'm transitioning with Sean because that was a big thing that I set up in my earlier years as assistant principal because I really felt that we could do a better job with it. And it, it's more systematic now and it's, it's a good thing. And we're trying to, we're trying to make it better where we meet with guidance. We have the sending schools do recommendations, which we've made digital now, so it makes it a little bit easier. We're in the hope that our counselors will go down to the middle school and meet with smaller groups of the eighth grade classes prior to the middle of February. And then we will do our registration day where the student will come up and meet their home room teacher here and confirm classes that have been signed up for. We won't be doing spaghetti dinners or anything like that this year, unfortunately, but you know, we're trying to adhere to, to safety guidelines as well while giving the kids the full experience or as much of it as we can. So that's underway. That'll help for our scheduling, our master scheduling and to the kids to, to make them feel more at home when they eventually move up to the high school, so.
John, I, I hate to, I hate to even mention it, but I, I don't know if I understood completely what Deb was referring to about unvaccinated, what we're talking about for young vaccinated people and, um, can you?
I think.
Can you give me just like, can you give me like, what is the protocol right now?
From, from what I understood, and I, I don't know, I really don't know where it's all coming from. But I did take a note down and correct me if I'm wrong, Deb, that the unvaccinated students and families are feeling a bit out on a limb and not feeling as much love as we should be giving them. And we really need to pay more attention and be, which I think we are, but again, I, I'm going to look into that.
Is that what you're saying, Deb?
Yeah, I'm, well, worse than that, I mean, when I said they said they felt like lepers, that's totally where they are. It's a lot more shameful and upsetting and concerning and basically not treating them with the same equity as other students. Feeling like they have to stay, they are forcing them to stay home longer without any work plans. And this is probably occurring maybe more frequently in the lower grades than in the high school specifically. But the letter from, from Andy did not address what the process is handling unvaccinated students. And I'm hearing from parents that it's, it's a horrible thing that they're not, and the, and the boards are not aware of how they're treating them and sending them home without the availability of additional learning because they're unvaccinated and they've had a close contact. They don't, are not treated the same way as vaccinated students who have a close contact. It's different. I can't speak to it exactly without children myself, but I'd have to go back to notes that they had given me as well. So yeah, it's a lot further than, than being a little slighted. It's a lot slighted, thank you.
I mean, Deb, I would, I would offer up to any, any parent. They have the opportunity to sign up to, to speak with me at any time. I mean, I don't hold any prejudgment on parents. I get every once in a while an email from a parent or two. You know, I, our protocols and our guidance are based on what we get from the AOE. And the latest one that we put out last night was based on the new guidance. It did focus mostly around kids who are vaccinated because there's a lot of confusion around that vaccination piece. And, and what the state is now saying that if you were vaccinated with the double, but it's been more than six months, you're no longer considered up to date vaccinated and trying to get our heads around that. So we were trying to get out in front of a, an announcement that's supposed to happen tomorrow because it was out in the paper and out all over social media. But, you know, I, I've had, I've had actually very cordial conversations with, with parents on all sides of the, the board who reach out to me. Actually, board, pardon me, the community who reach out to me because, you know, we, we, we need to hear all sides. And if, and if folks are feeling that they are being a scarlet letter is being put upon them type of thing, we, we need to know so that we can address that because we don't always hear about those things. So I do appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
And I just, you know, I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure, you know, we're at the high school board meeting. If it was a high school thing, I want to make sure John was aware of it and, you know, just because that's, you know, that's why we're here. Jason?
So I said a quick question, thanks, Molly. The, you guys had mentioned, I should probably have mentioned, and Andy just mentioned about some guidance that's coming up tomorrow. Is that the same guidance that is in Vermont vigor or is your, are we, I just don't want, if we're going to have something new tomorrow, different from the email yesterday, I'd like to kind of talk about it now instead of having to debate it two weeks from now. I don't know if that's.
So I haven't, I honestly have not read the Digger article. I read a different article that was posted on social media.
It's very similar to you.
So the secretary had a, he has a meeting every Thursday with the superintendents. There was allusion. I mean, on, coming on the, on Tuesday, but he wouldn't solidify anything. And then on Friday, we received a preliminary update. It wasn't anything that was, to my knowledge, was supposed to be published. And apparently did get published. And so after, you know, working with our, our administration and our school nurses, we, and, and surrounding districts, we kind of put that together to help guide, because I was getting, to be very honest with you, inundated with emails yesterday around it because it's very confusing. And, and, and so there.
The press report, it wasn't terribly helpful.
No, and so the reason why we haven't come out and said, yep, this is what's going to happen is because there have been times that the state has suggested that something's going to happen and then at the press conference it changed. So, so I, I, I'd be, I don't want to say, yep, this is what it's going to be and then have them come back and say, yeah, April Fools.
So but since your email, nothing's changed like today?
No.
Meeting with people or anything like that, you guys are not going to call it separate rules or anything?
No, so we, we've always as, as a, as an SU, with all the different districts, had followed the guidance of that. Sometimes we lag behind it a little bit because we kind of have to look at it and say, okay, can we, can we do this or can we not do this? Do we have enough, you know, type of stuff? So we don't always like on day one implement that new guidance.
Okay. Oh, I think David had his hand up.
David?
David does has his hand up. We're still under principals report. We found out when we had our last buildings and grounds meeting that while A and D wings have an auto shut off function for HVAC, when the fire alarms are activated, that B and C do not. And I believe that this board at its last meeting gave direction to the principal to move with alacrity in terms of addressing the necessary engineering to correct that situation. And I'm addressing a question here specifically to John, and that is what's been done about an HVAC alarm update since we last met?
Okay, good question. We have, first of all, both Sean and I have learned how to manually shut off all units from their source. And secondly, we have Sean Burt has contacted, and we had one meeting with our countryside, our alarm people, and they are meeting in conjunction. Sean had it set up for Thursday of this week, but unfortunately countryside have COVID and don't have workers to come out. So that is going to be next Thursday where they're going to come out and meet in conjunction with Lawrence and Loba to fit or to first of all, look where to fit and then fit the detectors on the units that don't have them. Because I believe that's what you instructed me, you wanted me to do. So I will have an answer hopefully by the next board meeting and maybe even have them fitted by then. So we're moving as quickly as we can within the, the Christmas and the COVID restrictions that are falling around us. So, but yes, David, that's been, that's been a concern and that's been a, an area we approached very quickly.
Thank you, John.
Anyone else, any for the principal? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Finance?
Not a lot update, I just wanted to, just as we're going through and look at the, that the boards know kind of where we are in the situation. I'm working with two consultants right now. One is a former business manager. Retired just last year, has, has expressed the desire just want to stay retired. But is helping with some direction on getting some things ready for town budget and stuff like that. So that kind of layer of things that I don't have the information on. And the other one is more of the, the staff CPA helping navigate getting, as I think I alluded to in earlier, there's a, there's a need to kind of work on FY22 a little bit right now. So we're helping, helping our staff where to put things and where to code things so that things are coded correctly. I think Mr. Wright had brought up earlier in our other meeting that desire to have things coded correctly. We want things coded correctly, so we're getting that piece. We are going to be bringing a, a committee together to interview candidates here. And so, you know, hopefully we should have a replacement soon within, I would assume a month or so, so.
So kind of on that same topic, do you know when our next budget meeting is going to be for the high school? I know we're kind of waiting for the SU to get a budget, which hopefully is going to happen Wednesday.
I think we would have to look at a special meeting based on where we are in the, because if we, if we play it out, we were going to try and have it today. If we, if we, you know, if things can work out and we get on Wednesday, based on just the timeline that I now fully understand of when things need to get done. We, we probably need to look at something next week to try and get something through early next week, so.
It's the 20th, so should we maybe think about maybe Thursday?
You get Thursday stuff, right?
Most important meeting in the entire district happens on Thursday.
What was that?
The Jack show is on Thursday, so.
Jackson, okay, well, you'll get, you'll send us out something, Andy, when we can do it.
Yeah, and I hear like 4:30 is perfect for you.
It's perfect.
So, no, what is it, what is it?
It's the end by the 20th.
So Molly, what is a good time for you?
So Molly, what is a good time for you?
I can, so I can be at any meeting you want me to be at five thirty. But at five o'clock, it's just.
Okay.
Uh Jackson's meeting on Thursday and Rockingham Board is meeting on Tuesday. Because talking with the Kingdale is Monday, but you have to have it in on Wednesday.
Now, well, if it's the twentieth, it's Thursday, so. Be ready, really, to use, you know, the cer- the twentieth is when you would post it.
What what I'm saying is, we could have a meeting on the nineteenth, which would.
The nineteenth?
The nineteenth would, once you want to meet on Monday, which is a holiday.
Well, it's my birthday too, so I'd rather not.
Question on that, because then if your budget committee meets, you also gotta handle my school meeting.
That means I'm spending Monday with you guys, huh?
Or Friday.
I don't care, I'll do whatever we gotta do to get it done.
It's obvious. We're ready to go, so that's it. So do you wanna say Friday at six or six thirty? Is one better for you?
So you want Friday at six or you want five thirty?
I I I'm I'm here, so it doesn't matter to me, so it's it's.
So we gotta have a high school meeting also, and let's do budget at five thirty. And then we gotta have a high school meeting at six thirty?
If it's ready to go to the to the board.
Let's try it.
Okay, I'll make sure it gets warned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get off topic there a little bit, but I just knew it was important to get it done. David?
Thank you, Molly. Okay, on the W N E S U website, it's a letter from R H R Smith. Those are the auditors, dated December ten. And in that letter, it enumerates um five material misstatements which R H R Smith. Um discovered in the course of doing their audit work, we're referring to business office year end. Um work and as a statement at the end of R H R Smith's letter. Says, we look forward to providing you a detailed update of the various issues with amounts. By next week's end and heaven help me, but I think next week's end was um. Uh about five weeks ago, so I'm kind of curious as to um just um what that detailed update produced.
David, great question and um. I think things were a little little messier than they actually even anticipated at that moment. Um they are prepared, um they will be at the S U board meeting on Wednesday night. Um where they will give a a a reporting out uh of much more detail.
So Andy, is it correct to say that there has been no updating done at all by R H R Smith on this matter since December ten?
I have met with them on a a regular basis, um but they haven't produced a written report. Jack, yeah, on on that, given the pressure of getting budgets done, and I know that some of these numbers. That we're gonna use for a budget are predicated on hopefully corrected. Uh corrected numbers of that we'll be using both for the. For our final budget and for the S U budget that contributes to it, I I'm wondering if. We can have some preliminary discussion for R H R Smith and perhaps more detailed one later, because I suspect that. We'll have a robust forty minutes minimum of questions about what has gone on. And, you know, who owns what piece of it, I just don't want that to blow up everything else.
I think I think they're willing to be available whenever needed.
Okay, I was thinking that, you know, we could have a discussion, very limited to what we need for processing the budget. And then ask people to hold off the subsequent meeting where we get down into what on earth happened. Why it happened, is it fixed, is it really fixed this time and, you know, and just. So so many people had their fingers in the mess that we have. And pretty hard trust that we want to make sure that we've got it, that we're comfortable, because one of the things we'll be doing when we do accept. Uh audits is, you know, discussing whether we continue the relationships and I think that is. We need to have a comfort level.
Right. Any other questions or comments on finance? See none, uh I have no committee reports unless um you have. The H VAC system on unfinished business, John, so I mean, building grounds, the only thing we got going on, and I think we're gonna take care of that in the next subject, so. Um I think no one else has anything, we're gonna move on to unfinished business for discussion. And seven A is approval to write R F P, R F Q for the H VAC work, and John, I think you got the floor.
Okay, um yeah, the the last meeting, um. We, I, we, we're all together. Uh one of the points I wanted to do is get permission to write the R F P, R F Q. I did get some advice from uh Norm Ekin from the the state and kind of what needs to be in it. And I tapped the the brains of of M and E around what we require done, I think. That I've got a good start, but again, I didn't want to start writing it until I had permission, although. I've kind of done a, you know, I've got the draft ready to go. Um I'm not ready to go, but ready to work on if the board can give me permission to. Write that and then if we're having a meeting Friday, that's awesome, because then I can present it there and we can get it out, so. That that's all for that one that I wanted to put on to get permission, so.
So can we have a motion to approve John to work on writing up the R F P, R F Q? For the H VAC work? Thank you, Marla.
I I I want to speak to that.
Oh, absolutely.
This type of work, some of them tends to be, even, I mean, I know a number of people who. Do nothing but reengineer high schools and 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 middle schools and. You know, colleague Chris Polis, who does this, used to do this kind of stuff, does sort of, retired. But it's really a specialty. Uh and you can get led by the nose by the, you know, because if you win the spec, you win the bid. It's generally the way this stuff works, and people tend to tell you things you need to do that are in their wheelhouse. And tend to suggest you don't need things that they don't know how to do well. I don't, you know, at one level, I don't have an objection to you doing the R P, John, but boy, I really would feel better if you had. You know, if there was somebody that you connected with who's not bidding on this. That is, that's going to provide you with the help you need, because as I say, this type of stuff challenges engineers. And, you know, that's not necessarily, you know, you're on your resume.
I I talked to Norm Ekin, who is the person at the A O E who does this for a living. He has no direct. Benefit from us at all, I talked to M and E Engineering, just based on their report and. Our previous meetings where we talked about getting all the right work in the spec. I would like to write a draft and get it out so everybody to have a look at as well, not just turn up and say, here we go, we're ready to go, so. Um I agree, I mean, I I it's not my, it's not my, I've learned a lot about engineering over the last four weeks, believe me. I've learned more than I ever wanted to. A couple of people are gonna offer me an engineering degree, the amount of work I've done in the last four weeks. But um I again, we're all in this together, I I I'll put it together and. You know, I'd like this to see if it fits the bill.
Point, it might circulate this, and we find out that might sure, and I evolve retreat and uh and.
Yeah, I think we get started on something, then, you know.
I'll get it to you.
So question, that was question one.
Sure.
Question two is, when we're doing this, you know, I. These kind of projects can take six months. If I take longer, and this is not a building where you can wall off part of it while you're doing work. Because there aren't any walls to wall up and because uh because the air handling system is sort of a common room. Problem and uh I so so I guess I'm asking. Uh as we start to look at this, I wanna, I I'd like us to start thinking about how this happens here. Because, you know, are we, are we actually, are we gonna be able to do this in whole classes? Because I don't see taking it all done in the summer, uh what what is, what is the process? You know, are we gonna, we gonna bring kids to graffin elementary school for a couple of months, you know, what what's the, what's the plan here to get people? Uh as many people out of the building, though, this work is being done as we possibly can, so, you know, I I, you know. It it just seems to me a concern, you know, I.
Go ahead, Andy.
I I agree with you, and I think that's something that as we get a little deeper into this and when. Someone comes in and gives us the specs, we, that's what we also need to know is, what's the impact on the building and the student population? You know, are we gonna have to double up at the at the middle school or something like that, I mean, I've worked in districts where, you know.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
We don't have those answers.
Right, so I think I think we need to know, like, what are they talking about, are they, are they talking about? Exactly what you're saying, can they, can they safely skirt off an area of a building? Or is it, nobody can be in the building, so therefore we have that contingency plan for them?
Mason? So Molly, um two things, uh Mr. Barley, if um if you'd like, I I do have experience looking at R F Ps on a regular, I I. I look at them pretty much every day, uh as far as government contracts, I can tell you. Specifically out there in Internet land, there's one R F P for Fairhaven Union High School. Uh currently that I see throughout the whole state, doesn't mean if they're not there, I just, that's what I see, for a remodel for the entire state. And uh so if you need uh more than one to look at it. And and I know that on our Building and Grounds Committee, they did, you know, we did bring up that this school was built for seven hundred students. And we currently have three hundred and thirty-two or twenty-two, something like that, so I think safely we could. Reorganize, tarp off, you know, and and start stuff sooner the better to uh.
Well, the 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 process that, listening to the guys that were presenting to us and just recently, the engineers. And the not, the unknown of materials, I think the 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 best, I mean, the the process would be to. Get it, by the time we agree on the R F Ps and get an engineer to oversee the the whole job and then work out. With them, we would work out the calendar which best suits us for the work that needs to get done. And it would also be based on the availability of labor and materials, so even if we. You know, got things rolling, got it done, which would be great in the next month. Um we might not necessarily start in two months' time, we might not even start in the summer. I I that's the questions we don't know, but as you just said there, the sooner we get it rolling. The sooner we'll find that next phase of information, so I totally agree with that.
Thank you, that's a, that's a nice offer to help him.
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions on? Um a motion to approve. Approval for John Barley to um write an R F P, R F Q, the H VAC work that he can bring to the board. And um everybody will get a chance to look it over. Um let's vote on it, David?
Yes.
Margot?
Yes.
Deb?
Hi.
Brenda?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jason? Jack? Okay, motion passes, thank you, that's, thank you, John, you've worked, you've put a lot into that, let's keep it rolling.
Well, can I go on to B now?
You can.
Um so the in in.
Let me just, uh in case anybody not listening. Um seven B is approval to reopen the M E engineering contract. To have them complete work and pay them from a capital improvement fund. Um we are looking for a motion on that. Let's make the motion and then you speak your motion, please, that's what you're looking for?
So again, it would be to reopen the M and E engineering contract. And have them complete the priority corrections in the work that. Uh they suggested were priority, which is that two hundred and. On here, it's two hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred, that price may have shifted, and again, that was an estimate, so. That's a ballpark figure.
Does anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, Molly.
Thank you, Jason, so now there's a motion on the floor to approve to reopen the M E engineering. Contract to have them complete work and pay them from capital improvement funds, John, you got the floor?
Okay, thank you. Um I believe from talking with uh Mr. Sullivan anyway, for M and E. That this is a possibility, it was me that I asked him and just said. Um you know, how do these things work, has this ever happened in the past? Because I feel they did all the diagnostic work and they did a pretty uh thorough autopsy. Um I I know we had the, a lot of um. Maybe we didn't do it the right way, uh I don't want to go back in the past, I want to move forward. Where they can come in and complete certainly those corrections. Which will have us in a good place while we then look to um set up. A engineer to design the rest of our work that is needed. From what I gather, talking with M and E, um if we do get the go ahead. We would have to check maybe with our lawyers, and this is where I'm I'm not totally sure, that's why I'm asking you guys. Um we checked with our lawyer that in fact we can do that. Uh we do have a three hundred and sixteen thousand capital reserve fund. Um put away for jobs such as this, I believe. And uh I think, again, in the in the. We do have us to move forward and begin the the process sooner rather than later. Um also in talking with the engineer, this is work that can most of you done while students are in the building.
Can you tell me that capital reserve fund again?
Uh three hundred and sixteen thousand. So I I just wanted to put it out there, I think it would be good for us to move forward with this. I don't know how you guys feel.
Jack, go ahead.
Oh, thanks, some of this is work that, I mean, priority is priority, so I get that. You know, I don't want to get some delaying thing, but some of this is specifically the kind of work. That the E S R money was intended for, so, you know, tapping a capital reserve fund. Should be, I think, if at all possible, deserve the things that are not health, that are not part of the COVID health and safety. Uh box, uh that's one, two, uh E S R has a good. Uh a good rule of thumb that forty thousand dollars is sort of the cap pass which you have to ask. For more than one bidder on a piece of work. Uh I understand of.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay, I thought.
They did, but this board decided, not this board, but the S U board kept it at fifteen thousand.
That was, but be that as it may, uh the 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 fact is that whatever board does it. Uh was fifteen or forty, it's not a hun- it's not six-figure deal. Opening up a bid in the way they're suggesting, I'd suggest it too, if I were the sales engineer. Uh because that's what you, that's a great way to uh to get a no bid uh work through the back door. Uh I don't have a good answer for you on this. Uh, I don't have a good answer for you on this, John, I really don't, which I did. But I really, guys who didn't do the work properly the first time, offering you the opportunity to do work, to correct things you didn't fix the first time through, but what is basically a backdoor no-bid process, strikes me as an awful lot of stuff that would bother me. So I would just, again, suggest to chat with, you know, Andy and, and figure out, a, and, and, you know, Jim, who's really supposed to be owning all this, not you. And, because if you can't figure it out, that's an issue for me. And, because A, you shouldn't be at, being asked to do that. And B, I think that your engineering team here needs to work that out because A, it's not really cool to do large contracts like this through the back, back door. And it's with the contractor that, in my view, didn't deliver all that well the first time. So those, I, I just got to say, chat with other people on this before you say yes.
Sure.
So, Andy, is it ESER funds? Can we get, can we use ESER funds for that?
More than likely, yeah.
Yeah.
So we, what we'd have to do is, um, is this is work, right? We're talking about, um, so we'd have to do a construction application, get concept approval, then, um, a little bit more approval, do a little more work, a little bit more approval, um, to then use those funds.
That kind of work tends to be, at least according to the website that, that, you know, US Department, you know, put out on this. Supposed to be sort of prioritizable, I have no idea what, how that actually means. But it would be, you know, I, I just think you, I'm, I'm hoping you don't get tied up in a bunch of red tape.
No, it, actually, the AOE, for, for as much as I am the first person to knock them.
Uh, no, you're second.
Okay, uh, they have been very helpful and, and the, and the, and the folks that are dealing with this. Um, a lot of times I can query them even ahead of time. And they'll say, that sounds like it will get approved, and then you can, you know, so you can get some help in doing it. So, um, I think, um, Jim and I were supposed to schedule some time to kind of dig into that and, um, with these construction apps and everything, so we can just put that as our first one to kind of test the waters.
Well, this, this can also be weaved in, not weaved, this was also part of the RFP, uh, process to get the engineer and to plan for all this work that is, is needed. So, again, we, we could just have it all in that and get it all done after we get a bid and after we get a contractor and do it, you know.
But if you want to use ESER funds.
That's what I mean.
We got to start with the construction application, which is this big idea of what do we want to do? So let's.
You want that anyway, because that's actually how you should write an RFP, is you do sort of, you do an engineering process to say, what is it we're trying to accomplish? Because if you, if you don't know what the, if you don't know what the goal is, uh, you can't write, you can't do an engineering spec. Uh, so you gotta, you know, because you have no outcome basis to measure it on. You know, these are white papers on this. So just.
So I, I think we understand.
Yeah.
I would rather use estimate.
Jason, would you like to speak to your motion?
John, just, uh, uh, Deb has a question.
Yeah.
But I'm a little confused on what we're.
Deb?
Oh, sorry. So I'm hearing that there were some problems with the last time they were doing work, which doesn't that mean a make-good? Um, do we, do we never get credit for poor performance?
Uh, Deb?
Go ahead.
Uh, Deb, M and E did our diagnostic work. They didn't do the actual HVAC work, uh, itself. They just did the diagnostic work and made, and came up with, after looking at all the factors, what we were still needing, and then also what we needed to complete our last phase, which some of it we, I believe anyway, uh, was known. And these priority corrections are from them, so it's not, it's not the company that were, um, that actually did the work.
Okay.
So I wasn't turned on that either.
Molly, I would like to say, uh, some things on the motion. Um, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So there's $316,000 in a reserve fund that is set aside when we do the budgets on a yearly basis. That, because that's, that's there, right? That money is like in Mr. Brody's savings account.
That's right. No, no, don't say that.
So it's me, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
And then, and then we have, and it's, this is going to cost us $244,000 of that money potentially to fix things that need to be done immediately to help the quality of air in the school, correct? Is that what they're saying?
To, to help heat it, control it, and.
And also on that, there is some, possibly, the last person who did it may or may not have did it correctly, they might be saying. And then we would have to either go after them or have that original engineer come back in and fix their work. Is that accurate?
If they did stuff wrong.
Yeah, okay. And then, and then on top of that, we may or may not be able to use ESER funds, but we don't know any of that yet. But we have to write this contract, write this thing first, like Andy said, in order to even get the ball rolling.
Yes.
So I'm very confused. I understand if it's used. My only point is that I've been on the Building and Grounds Committee since August. Here we are, January 10. And prior high school, uh, meetings or whatever, was going back a whole year before that, so. It's very frustrating that 18 months later, we're still at this. And so it's like, either do it or don't do it, and put the money back in the bank account somewhere. So I just, uh,
As I say.
I don't know what to do.
If we can get ESER to pay for it, the whole job, that would be great.
Yeah.
Um, I, and I think that the process is, though it will be tough, it will be manageable for us to do.
I, I think you and I think alike, and we'll, we'll do anything for the kids, but it's just, uh, this is, it's, it's tough that we're still struggling with this 18 months later.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I know David had.
David?
Thank you, Molly. At the August 25th, WNESU meeting, the WNESU board raised the bid limit from 15,000 to $40,000. Okay, that's something that you might want to figure out if it applies to the high school. I think the high school would have to make a similar motion. Second item, I believe, and this requires legal, uh, advice, that in order to expend, um, reserve funds, that you need the voter's permission. Uh, thirdly, I want to say that I do agree with Deb that, um, if ME came in here and found out there were defects with the 2013 and 2018 Thomas Engineering upgrades, then we should be looking to have, uh, at least give Thomas the opportunity to rectify the apparent mistakes. And if they are unwilling to do so, then we need to discuss what our next steps would be.
Yeah, just as a history on capital reserve, the idea what was, that instead of, e- e- every building is a shelf life, you know, including this one, maybe more so this one. But because it has a shelf life, you want, you want to build in, uh, monies to either do substantive renovation of the building or replace. Uh, I originally hoped by this point in the development of that fund that we'd be far higher in the bottom line than $300,000. But yes, it does need to, when we do spend it, it's a, it's, uh, an item that does have to go before the voters. So I think if we're, if we're going to do that, we need to know that because we would want to get an approval of some sort uh, on the, e- either we have a special meeting or we get it in the, uh, we get, we get it in the warrant. So, uh, that, that's what I would say about that.
Okay.
Please try the right, secure the right.
Yeah, so we started that and I've let that build up because we had, um, you know, we're still really hoping that we're going to be able to fix the, fix the parking lot.
Fix the building.
Yeah, so when we, you know, when we saw, you know, that, you know, just like Jason talked, you know, we've talked about this a lot, and I, I get that, you know, there's been, maybe some errors done, maybe not, nobody really can tell us that clearly, but, um, I think, uh, I, I commend John in trying to find a plan because he was, you know, just trying to get these things done and, and make sure that we had the air quality that we needed for our kids, but, um, Jason, it sounds to me like maybe we ought to withdraw the motion and, and attempt to get this under ESER funds, is that what we should be doing?
Yeah, I just, just wanted to briefly just say, the RFPS are just opened up like a week, uh, or a little bit more than a week ago. So, um, we haven't had those RFPS or funds available to us. Um, and I will own not doing the construction grant or pushing that a, a lot sooner because I, I'm still trying to learn all the different ins and outs, and we could have gotten concept approval, um, on that sooner, but.
Well, that's, I understand. Thank you. Anyone else have any more comments, or can we move on?
I just want to thank, uh, thank my colleague for, for pushing this because I do think that, uh, we've taken a rather leisurely approach. And we, uh, really do, if, if, if these things are health affecting defects, we, we need to get the afterburns on. So I thank Jason for, you know, assisting that we get this moving.
Okay. Uh, next thing we have is Haver donation discussion. Brody?
Um, I believe, David, you, you wanted that on this week again, correct?
David, you have a question on the Haver donation?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a statement.
Where's yours?
My statement? It's right here. At the last W N, pardon me, the last Union High School meeting on December 13, I, uh, pointed out the fact that we've had the Haver donation for two years without having received any primary documentation on it, uh, in terms of what Haver intended. We have relied, uh, exclusively on the representations of the former and current, uh, Union High School principals. And I expressed my intent that if that information was not forthcoming, that I would in fact be filing a Freedom of Information request. I did that last week, and I believe that, um, Andy has those docs on his table. And I will cut straight to the chase here. Um, this is what's known as a public records request form pursuant to Vermont Record Act 1 VSA, Section 315 dash 320. I have made the following request. A, please forward to me any correspondence between former Principal Hodson and any representatives of the donor, as well as any correspondence which Principal Hodson may have had with others, including Chair Bannock, which in any way bears on this gift. B, any correspondence Principal Brody may have had with representatives of the donor, as well as C, any correspondence Principal Brody has had with former Principal Hodson or Chair Bannock, which bears in any way on the circumstances of the gift. And D, apologies, Andy, you're just a guy in the middle. Any correspondence which you, meaning Andy, may have had with regard to the Haver donation or requests for information. That's my statement. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. Is that a announcement that's going to get shared with Chair Bannock and Principal Brody?
Well, I would have hoped that that.
Opened it today. I'm so sorry.
I'm really sorry. We're trying to get budgets done, I get it. Um, Jack?
Yeah, um, you know, I, a- a- as an individual, uh, making these requests get tied down into, you know, being charged for page for, for, for doing the work. We went through this. But I actually think this is something that would benefit the, uh, this board to have as, as just public, so we can have a discussion. I would in fact like to do that and review it under, uh, exec, under the executive session at some point in February, because in fact, we really do need to know what representation's been made, what the donor's understanding is, and who owns the administration of, of these funds. Uh, these are you, you know, as, as David, when he quoted my, my bride on this, there is a process for doing this, it's a fairly standard one that most, uh, institutions use. And we can do it without being a particularly big deal. And we can talk about that, but again, since it is money, there is potential some legal exposure. There's a great chat we could have in February, and I suggest that when Andy's got all these documents together, that instead of charging Mr. Clark for publishing time, he has them for everybody, and we talk about it. Does that seem like a reasonable approach in putting to Mr. Clark?
Oh, I am proceeding with my, um, FOI, Jack.
Okay, just, you know, just didn't want to cost you any money you didn't have to spend, David. So, uh, but, but I'd like that we have that as an agenda item, and we can all do some learning about how grants are supposed to be, you know, or private grants are supposed to be administered, and that would be useful.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments about the Haver donation?
I have one.
Go ahead, Deb.
Yeah, um, only that there, despite the fact that we're doing budgets, um, the FOIA has a certain time requirement by whi- by which it must be responded to. And if it is unable to be done, then the, um, the person who's requested to complete it, the holder of records must ask for an extension if they need additional time, and they have to send it to David and ask him, um, if he will allow them any additional time. Um, otherwise, the, the, despite what Jack is saying, and I think that's all a good idea, the FOIA must be responded to appro- in the appropriate timeframe, even if David's getting the material before we get it in another meeting. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you for your advice.
Could, could I ask just, while I have Mr. Clark here? What is, because it, when I read through it, what is an appro, as Deb's saying, the response time, it, it just kind of vague to me, so, or I read it too fast, I'll be.
Is that a query, Andy? I'm missing that.
I, I'm, I'm, if, if, if I can.
Well, I'm going to read a couple paragraphs down the FOI request. It says that the law does not allow me to have access to some of these records. Please so inform me within three business days as provided by law, and inform me the specific exemption that applies to each record or portion of a record being withheld. If an otherwise public record has a portion that is exempt from disclosure, I request that you block out the exempt portion and release a copy of the rest of the document with a notation of the specific exemption that applies to the portion being withheld. Um, I will point out that, um, the superintendent of schools, and I apologize to you, Andy, because I am fully aware of just how busy you are. But well over a month ago, um, I sent you a note saying that I intended to file it and then invited a dialogue, which we have not had. If you would like to have that dialogue and the, uh, FOIs, um, addressed to you as the custodian of the documents, because I believe that they are contained on the WNESU servers, we can have that discussion. But in the absence of having, uh, engaged in that dialogue, I went ahead and filed. So at this point in time, it's my intent to see it through, although I'm always willing to talk.
My apologies, David, I, I totally missed that earlier today, or not today, but earlier this last month, so.
I'm sure, I think Deb raised her hand up again.
Go ahead, Deb.
No, I just for take, forgot to take the dang thing down.
Okay, let's move on to new business for discussion. Here's a good one. Accept donations from River Charities for sports activities. for sports activities.
Okay, uh, it was brought to me, uh, from Larry Slazin, who is the lawyer at Simon and Ostrom who represents River Charities, Inc. Uh, he has said enclosed, please find our client's check in the amount of four thousand dollars payable to BFUHS, representing its contribution in support of the sports activities. So I, I guess I would like this to make a motion to accept this check and the way it was written, uh, representing its contribution in support and in support of sports activities.
Thank you. Priscilla has made a motion to accept the donation from River Charities for sports activities. Is there any questions?
Do we have to send, uh, a report back out to River Charities or to Larry if that's spent?
Not asked, or I can, I'll, I can check with Larry if he wants one.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, just, in the, in the mode of, we have the document.
Three, three, four, four thousand dollar check.
Yes, that is great. Fantastic. So.
Anyone have any questions? There's a motion on Florida to accept donations for River Charities for sports activities. David, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Margot?
Yes.
Deb?
Hi.
Brenda?
Yes.
Priscilla? Jason?
Yeah.
Jack?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Next thing is teacher request unpaid leave through June of twenty twenty-two.
Sorry to be a nuisance in putting all these on, but again, it's what we do. We have an English teacher, Katie Emon. Um, and I'll, I'll read, if you don't mind, I'll read the, her somewhat brief email. Uh, my, she, she said, she gave me permission to read it, but, um, I'll just check through. That's a good point, because I'm impersonal. Uh, that's, it's not really, uh, she was on maternity leave, uh, having her child at the end of September and due to start back after Christmas. And she is having a hard, almost impossible time finding daycare for an infant. Uh, with COVID, it's really been, put the screws down on that. Uh, she has tried, she's on sixteen waitlists for that. I, and what I'm, what I'm asking for, and again, I've discussed it with her as well and, um, Katie's discussed it with our H R, uh, person, Joellen, uh, in depth and she knows where she stands. It would be unpaid leave, uh, until June twenty twenty-two and having her back next year. Um, and I'd like to add the caveat that if she does get, uh, daycare in the meantime, that we could have her back sooner to support our students. So that's, I don't know exactly how we want to word that.
Go ahead, Jack.
Do we have somebody filling her position on added room basis?
What we have right now is, um, our, the L A interventionist is working with her classes to finish out this semester. The plan would be to have her continue that next semester and look to advertise for a long-term sub.
The, the reason I'm asking is, what do you find for somebody that's willing to come in, uh, for, for a semester? It's different than somebody that you ask to fill in, come in for part of a semester, but could end at any time. And it would seem a mercy and rational to grant Miss Edmonds her six month, her, her whatever, semester's worth of time. But I, I think it's less defensible to give her the right to return at any particular point during that period. I think if you ask for a, if you ask for a leave, I'm perfectly interested in granting it, but I, but sort of what's, but what she's proposing really puts a burden candidly on the school district and impinges pretty heavily on whoever it is if you bring in to replace them. Uh, so I'm interested in, I would support giving her relief of absence, but I wouldn't support giving her the right to return at any time, that, that, that's not fair.
And we, we discussed that possibility as well. And I agree as well, Jack, if we can get, uh, a short-term sub or a teacher in for a semester to support that, that would be great and it'd be hard to say, oh, here comes April, sorry.
Well, I, I, I got, you know, I got three grandchildren, all better, the age where they need daycare.
Yep.
And I, I get the problem in a major way. That's why I spent the last few days doing. But still not, it wouldn't be fair to the institution, it would be, uh, what it's going in.
However, it also, my, however, it also depends on what we can do, because if we can't do it, somebody coming, we may very much want her to come back sooner. So it's kind of a, what to do situation.
That was just thought of leaving that caveat in, uh, in the current job market, I'm no more than fifty fifty of us getting somebody in, but again, I'm, I'm going to advertise and push forward and see what we can do, so.
Jason?
John, I have a question. Thank you, Molly. How, how long has Miss Emon been a teacher? She sounds very familiar.
I believe eleven years, but I can verify that.
And, and how would you, uh, characterize, uh, like her review, are you?
A teacher that I would not like to lose. And, and also, um, from her end as well, that she sincerely loves her job at BFUHS, thirteen years. Uh, thirteen years of service in the classroom and she runs the drama program as well. And she genuinely wants to return to work.
That's, that's all I know.
Yeah.
And it's just, just another example on how, you know, this virus has affected, uh, people's lives, um, in a negative way that is not on the illness, but the, you know, the, the mental part of it, that's just terrible.
Can I get a motion to accept the teacher request for unpaid leave through June twenty twenty-two? And should we put her name in there?
Got to move.
Katie Emon?
Yeah.
Does anyone have any other questions? David?
Yes.
Oh, oh, sorry. Wait, do we, do some, who made the motion?
Jack.
Do we want to do with the, um, with the possibility of looking for somebody, but if it's not counted, she does want to reach out, so.
I think you can, you can negotiate that when you made that decision. This basically says, here's a framework. If John can't find anybody who wants to chat back with her and she finds somebody, you know, that doesn't make that impossible. We're saying we're going to go look for somebody to fill the semester, uh, right now and see, see what happens, but that's.
And do we want it to not exceed seven days or not to exceed?
Uh, we're going to go through June of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, and I would also say we have openings throughout the S U for people, so that if something were to work out for Miss Emon and she wanted to come back, then that's, we had someone on that was of quality and wanted to keep. I, I, I think we'd be in a situation where it would be a win-win, so.
Okay.
You're still in the process of voting here?
Uh, David gave me a yes. Margot?
Yes.
Deb?
Hi.
Brenda?
Hi.
Priscilla? Jason?
Yeah.
Jack?
Yep.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Date of next meeting, it looks like it's going to be Friday, which is the fourteenth.
Think we could just get like lunch served and breakfast here, because we're going to be here.
So we have, um, so the next, the day of the next meeting is going to be for Budget Committee at five thirty and School Board meeting at six thirty. And we're going to go to Director's comments. We have something in the executive session, but let's get through Director's comments first. David?
Thank you, Molly. I want to correct a misperception from earlier in the meeting. Superintendent evaluation is very much the constituent board's business and the members of those constituent boards. It is directly analogous to, um, negotiations. We discuss negotiations so that we can give informed counsel to our negotiators. And by exactly the same token, uh, we discuss superintendent's evaluation, um, so that we can give informed counsel to our, uh, supervisory union voting members as to how they should vote. Quite a number of years ago, there was a, um, incident which occurred at the supervisory union table. And this is ancient history, but I want to tell you about it very quickly here. Um, Russ Capron was the supervisory union board chair and he kicked Paul Obahoski, who was a high school member but not a voting member, out of an executive session. The, uh, superintendent of schools at the time, whose name I do not wish to utter in polite company, sought a legal opinion from counsel, which at the time was Stetson and Page. And their response was that, as I just said, in order to give informed counsel to the voting members of the high school's supervisory union membership, it was imperative that, uh, items discussed in executive session were freely shared with those high school board members. And I'm going to suggest to you that it, uh, works very similarly around superintendent evaluation. As it happens, in the past, we have had lengthy discussions, um, at the board table in executive session about the superintendent's performance. So to suggest that it's not an appropriate topic for this board to discuss, I would have to disagree with that. Um, I do have, um, one other question, actually, an observation and a question. I noticed that it has been some time now before the chair has, um, invited board members to, uh, submit, uh, possible agenda items. And I have to say that this meeting was, um, actually a bit of a surprise to me because the posting early last week was for the, uh, high school meeting of, um, January twenty-fourth. So it was somewhat of a surprise to me when this meeting of the, uh, tenth popped up with a fully formed agenda. Lastly, I do have a question for the chair and that is that way back on November twenty-ninth, um, uh, there was, um, a, an apology made to, um, Curtis Reed when he came in to speak to this board. And, uh, the twenty-two second gist of that was that, um, it was likely that the board chair and the principal would be meeting with Curtis Reed in order to, uh, explain to him the fact that this is not a racist institution here. Um, that we do try to, um, uh, at least, um, approach the less enviable parts of United States history with candor in those classes. And I sure as heck hope that, uh, if that meeting has not already occurred, that it is pointed out to him that Bellows Falls Union High School was a perennial winner of sportsmanship awards with regards to our involvement in team sports. So I'm uncertain as to what the status of that, um, discussion is, but I certainly would like to know. Thank you, Molly.
Margot?
I'm all set this evening. Thank you.
Deb?
Yeah, um, it's cold, people, please take care of yourselves. And my only other comment, of course, has to do with what I talked about at the beginning of the meeting, um, which has to do with treating all students equally. That equity matters a great deal and I don't believe, based upon what I'm hearing, and maybe I'll hear some more stories of corrections later, that all children deserve an education and they should not be singled out and separated because of a situation such as this. We have ways to address it. We need to address it and treat them equally. Thank you.
Brenda?
Um, I believe I'm all set. Thanks.
Priscilla?
Again, just keep everybody in mind as far as how you treat them and treat everybody equally and everybody fairly. That kindness goes a long, long way. And with everything that's happening right now, all the changes, the requirements of COVID, the things that, uh, Mr. Host is having to deal with to get out to the staff and the others. Um, it is a very difficult time for everybody, from every person who works in our schools to our boards, to our administration. So, um, just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Jason?
Thank you, Molly. So there are some concerns of Americans, concerns of Americans are shifting. Recent poll finds that management of the coronavirus pandemic is beginning to recede in the minds of Americans and overshadowed by concerns about the economy, particularly inflation. Thirty-seven percent named COVID as a priority compared to fifty-three percent last year. Sixty-eight percent are concerned about the economy this year. Inflation is the price we pay for those government benefits everybody thought was free. I said before and I'll say it again, what we're doing to kids, we will not know the effects for years to come. Fortunately, for the kids that were cheated last year and this year, they all can vote. And I hope they remember this when they cast their vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack?
Couple quick things. One, housekeeping item. You go onto the W N E S U org dot website and you will see meeting agendas starting with, uh, January of twenty twenty-one. You will see meeting minutes, starting, most recent is January eleventh, nine, uh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the reason I bring this up is your board clerk is legally obliged to make certain that, uh, that minutes and agendas are posted in a convenient place to be read by, by any and all. And we really do, we, we've been messing this up for years. And I would just say that the, uh, the ownership of minutes and of agendas uh, is a responsibility of the clerk who has the opportunity to do as much yelling as he or she would like about getting this straightened out. And I would encourage that to happen because we, it's been going on now for more than since twenty twenty-one. Uh, that's item one. Item two is, uh, I think I mentioned this a while back, but I'm going to mention it again, that Dr. Ditchcock, uh, turned away more than five hundred patients last month because they don't have enough staff because so many people are sick. And what's distressing about that is the enormous percentage of those who are people under the age of eighteen. Uh, this is a real change from the, from early COVID days. Kids, the people that are getting sick are not the vaccinated adults, it's the unvaccinated young people. Certainly, we want to be gentle. We want to be supportive of, of, uh, decisions of, of parents who decided uh, not to, not to go the vaccination route, but we really must do everything we can that's not coercive to encourage them. Uh, the likelihood of hospitalization. Uh, the likelihood of hospitalization, an unvaccinated young person is six times what it is of a vaccinated person. That's from, uh, that's from the National Institutes of Health. And, uh, we called Joanne Conroy at Dartmouth, and she'll tell you the same thing. And she's the president, so she should know. Uh, so please, folks, get vaccinated. You, you will, uh, save your child an inordinate amount of grief. You'll save your family an inordinate amount of headache, and not to mention horrendous medical bills. So please, 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 if, if you have questions, you can call Dartmouth-Fishcock. You can call Grace Cottage. You can call, uh, you can call Cheshire. They have somebody there that will do nothing but answer your questions if you're concerned about this. You can go, there's a certain place you go online to get information. You know, I'll get you an appointment to talk to, uh, to Keith Loud personally, if it comes down to that. You know, so that you can find that, so you can be confirmed in your decision. But you've got to, you've got to really think about this, and please, if you are on the fence, get vaccinated. This is safe and sensible choice. Thank you.
Thank you. So none of us here are, are new board members. Um, I, if I need to send an email out to every single one of you before we have a meeting for your agenda items, an issue, I guess I would like your, um, response to that comment, some email, because if you have something you want on the agenda, you, we all have the issue, the WNESU emails, and you can certainly send me an email and, um, we'll do our best to get it on. Sometimes our agendas are full and we wait till the next meeting, but we certainly can do that. Uh, we, when we schedule our meetings for the high school, we have always plugged in the second and fourth Mondays of every month. Most of the time, we don't need to use that second Monday. And we've been running one meeting a month. Um, when I first got on this board, we were teetings a month all the time. But a lot of times, we didn't need that second, we didn't really do much. So we, we cut it back to the fourth Monday. Um, John had some things that he wanted to address, um, that, you know, we felt was important enough to have that second meeting, and we're gonna have a third meeting this month, but we're gonna meet Friday. Um, don't ever hesitate. If you've got something on your mind, uh, send an email out. We, um, we all have the emails. So, um, you know, communication is, is perfect, and, and we all live on our phones and our computers, so don't hesitate to get it out there. Um, the next thing we gotta do is, um, motion to go to an executive session, and, um, Priscilla, help me on how we're gonna board that.
Um, it would be a motion going to executive session to discuss, um, negotiations with preliminary, um, disclosure of the information could have, could have impact.
Oh.
Okay, thank you very much. There's a motion to go to executive.
We want to invite Andy, Mr. Host.
Okay.
I probably will allow for it to be raised, but I don't want to proceed. Don't go out.
We'll be, yes.
And Mr. Bradley.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And there's a motion on the floor to go to an executive session, David?
Tonight, I am abstaining.
Margot?
Yes.
Deb?
Aye.
Brenda?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jason?
Yeah.
Jack?
Yeah.
Okay.